All right. Good evening. Welcome to the June 4, 2025, meeting of the Arlington School Committee. Tonight's meeting of the Arlington School Committee is being conducted in person and through the use of Zoom. This meeting is being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI, and the meeting is being recorded. Because all members are anticipated to be present, votes will be taken by voice unless a roll call is required. Persons wishing to access the meetings using Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. The posted agenda and supporting materials for this meeting are also available on the town's website. Due to open-meeting law restrictions, the committee cannot participate in or access Zoom's chat function. While everyone is welcome to observe this meeting, active remote participation -- oh, boy. Sorry, lost the last bit -- requires advance notice. All participants are asked to activate their camera and shall provide their full name in the interest of developing a record for the meeting. So we are here this evening. Mr. Thielman, I expect, will be joining us. We do not have representation from our Arlington High School student reps tonight. We have on Zoom, we have our Arlington Education Representative, Steve Ferranti. Steve, can you hear us? You're waving. Perfect. Lovely. All right. Thank you for being here. We are missing Dr. Mona Ford Walker this evening, but otherwise, we have everybody else who we expect to be here. So the first item on our agenda is public comment. We have a number of folks here tonight. I'm going to read the information about public comment. Everybody will be limited to three minutes because we do have quite an extensive list of folks here to talk to us. So the guidelines and our policy around public comment, individuals or group representatives may address the committee on items of school business. The length of the public comment segment shall normally be no more than 20 minutes. Speakers must identify themselves by name and address, and will be allowed up to three minutes to present their material. The chair may reduce speaking time if needed. I don't plan to do that. Speakers may offer such objective criticisms of the school operations and programs as concern them, but in public session, the committee will not hear personal complaints about school personnel.
Good to sit down.
Nor against any member of the school community except for the school committee or the superintendent in their capacity as the operational leader of the Arlington Public Schools. Under most circumstances, administrative channels are the proper means for disposition of legitimate complaints involving staff members. The public is reminded that the school committee does not hold jurisdiction over the performance of school personnel other than the superintendent. So the first -- we have two students from the Addison Middle School who are going to be joining us, who are up first, Christos Bonos and Avery Monin Browder. So if you guys come to the microphones right here, so both -- are you -- you're just here. Perfect. Lovely. Great. You can come and sit up here, though. That would be great.
She's on a different one.
Oh, you're on a different one. Sorry. Okay.
Is he not here yet? Do you want to wait for him?
Yeah, that actually is. That's possible. That would be excellent.
He's not here yet.
Okay. All right. So we'll go to the -- we'll go to the next one, and then we'll come back. The next person on the list that I have is Stephanie Ford.
Losing my wheels. All right. Hi, I'm Stephanie Ford. I live at 12 Lockland Avenue, and I have two students in the Arlington Public Schools. I want to start by saying that all of you work incredibly hard on many things in many different areas, but even so, I want to talk about families who are suffering from acts of bullying and retaliation. I think -- and I have a happy message, I hope. I think that we can have a tremendous amount of leverage in our bullying prevention plans by supporting the staff. In every incident, there are four roles. There's the victim, who often faces denial and retaliation; the aggressor, who very rarely benefits from correction or redirection; a staff member with the duty to report, but incentives to be silent; and an administrator with a duty to act, who may be focused on metrics of improvement instead of solutions. So when staff see harm, they ask, "Is this really bullying? Is this really harassment?" They hesitate. They look away. Their silence isn't a bug in the system. It's a feature that results from the incentives in the system. I have a survey of families in Arlington who've reported bullying, harassment, or retaliation since September 2021 for the last four years, and I ask that you please approach these statistics with curiosity. They might not be perfect, but they are not wrong. I ask families to look at each step of the process in the bullying prevention and intervention plan from the school committee and a sample of these. When someone reports bullying, 85% of the time, the district fails to take immediate steps to protect the student. 62% of the time, bullying is not reported by staff who witnessed it and have a duty to report. 77% of the time, no safety plan is created for the victim. 85% of the time, no one checks in to see if the harm continued. These are all copied and pasted. I used different words. I put the right words in the survey. In 69% of cases, retaliation is never addressed as bullying. For 62% of families, the aggressor is a staff member. We're looking at people who must know better and do better, but just like we need a path of safety for students, we need a path of safety for staff who report harm. For staff who make mistakes but are willing to repair the harm they caused, we need off-ramps so that staff aren't forced down a path of escalating retaliation. Incentives should be supported curiosity and repair for all four actors. When we have a bullying and retaliation problem, I don't think the fault is in the bullying prevention policy. I think the bullying problem is most damaging in the prevention of reporting. Thank you.
Are you Christos?
Yes.
Lovely. Okay. Welcome. So Christos Bonos and Avery Monin Browder. So if you go ahead and state your name and your address.
Of course. Avery Monin Browder?
Address?
Address? 46 Old Mystic Street, Arlington. Good morning, and thank you so much for being here. I'm standing before you today to highlight an issue faced by many in our community and to raise awareness of potential solutions within our schools. We are incredibly fortunate to have the MBTA in our community. These buses are a vital form of transit for so many in Arlington, and in addition to being an efficient and accessible option for many people in our community, they also serve as a vital means by which we can reduce greenhouse gas emissions via the usage of public transportation. However, throughout our research on this topic, my peers and I have found that in addition to the MBTA, students need alternative routes to help them to get to school on time and ready to learn. After all, when bus delays lead to student tardiness, it becomes clear that we need alternative options. It is vital to our learning and by extension, our growth as young people. The implementation of alternative routes such as these is hardly uncharted territory for Arlington. Currently, a district-run bus service operates at Bishop Elementary School, where it transports two rounds of students to class and home every day. In another example, many public schools in Arlington have bike racks facilitating the usage of cycling as an effective tool to get to school. These efforts, and more broadly, all the work that has been done to expand student transportation, have been extremely valuable for students, and we humbly ask for your continued support in ensuring that students have safe, effective transportation options. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Can you share your name and address with us for the record? Thank you.
Christos Bonos, 46 One Mill Lane. Greetings, members of the Arlington School Committee. I am speaking on behalf of not just myself, but over the hundreds of people who use the MBTA for transportation to school every single day, to say that our extreme student reliance on the MBTA simply just isn't reliable, and that alternative modes of transportation for students are necessary. First off, the MBTA has so many people who use it to get to and from school that their buses end up overcrowding. So much, in fact, it has been causing students to be late to school. So as you're all aware of, I assume, when a bus is too full of people, it will skip stops and just head straight for its destination. Because the MBTA is always super crowded with numerous students and adults relying on it for daily commutes, this has made many students late for school on numerous occasions. In fact, from a survey we collected, 52% of students who use the MBTA tend to be late or are often late. These are some of their stories. One student reports being late by 20 minutes because the MBTA was too crowded and skipped his stop. He ended up missing valuable learning time, in fact, 5% of the entire school day. Another student was late by 25 minutes because she has to take two buses to get to school each day. When one of these buses is late because of crowding, then she ends up being late, and when both buses are late, then it's a much greater effect. These are only a few of the many examples regarding the MBTA affecting students on their way to school. This issue of unreliable student transportation is taking away from valuable educational time, and it is not just a matter of convenience, but it is impeding on student education. Now, do not get me wrong. I think that the MBTA is a great service to have in our community, and we are very grateful for it. It's a great way to get to school. However, unfortunately, so many other students agree with this. The demand for the MBTA is simply so large before and after-school hours, it becomes too crowded to safely count on. The best way to ensure our students maximize their learning time by arriving on time is through providing and encouraging alternative modes of transportation. While we support things like putting in place additional bike racks, we also strongly believe a town-funded busing system for the middle schools would be most beneficial. While students may be able to bike to school some days, you can't bike in the rain. You can't bike in freezing temperatures or while it's snowing. Not only are these conditions harsh, it's simply not safe. Buses also prevent emissions from cars being emitted into the atmosphere. A busing system would also alleviate congestion, the MBTA, with students opting to use our new system, which makes the MBTA more reliable for all. It's not necessary that we provide enough buses for every student in the entire school. We simply need enough to alleviate MBTA congestion so the buses can all do their jobs and work together. This means we would be able to transport students who need it through this town-provided bus service and make the MBTA more reliable and more effective, making students be on time to learn all the time. When planning the budget for future years, please take this into consideration to support our next generation of critical thinkers and academic leaders in the Arlington community.
Thank you very much.
Before they go.
Yes.
Policy allows us to ask clarifying questions. If I may, who have you talked to besides us? Have you talked to state reps, state senator, contacted them?
There have been numerous people who we have contacted, such as someone on the school board, who has -- we've contacted him to ask what they're doing to help with MBTA congestion. They said that they were working to add a bus to the 77 route to help alleviate congestion alongside it. So we've been at work with that.
We've been, too. I would -- if you would kindly send me your testimony in email, and I'll see if I can point you to other people you can go and talk to, because your testimony is very helpful.
Thank you.
Of course. Thank you so much. Thank you. Next is Sonia Sheikh, also from the Addison.
Hi, my name is Sonia Sheikh, and I live at 83 Medford Street, Arlington. So I'm here today to ask for your support in raising awareness of excessive use of rodenticide. Rodenticides, or anticoagulants, are harmful chemicals used to control pests, specifically rats. Rodenticide has been proven to be significantly harmful to wildlife, as animals that feed on rodents, such as owls, hawks, and eagles, are susceptible to secondhand poisoning. Moreover, the unsafe use of rodenticide often leads to accidental poisoning of young children and pets. Not only does rodenticide have detrimental effects, it also isn't effective, perpetuating the problem by making rodents resistant to poison. This leads to even worse infestations in our schools, homes, and public spaces. Thankfully, the problem is being just addressed as Arlington became the first town in Massachusetts to establish a public land span on rodenticide, leading to the submission of two bills this year that would prohibit anticoagulant rodenticide in Massachusetts. Unfortunately, even with these initiatives, Arlington continues to struggle with the impacts of rodenticide, as more than 20 wildlife deaths have been linked to its exposure. So in order to combat this issue, we think it would be important to educate the public on the harmful consequences of rodenticide, starting with students. This approach can create a ripple effect, as students bring their knowledge home to their families and communities fostering broader change. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Cheryl Miller, who is with us on Zoom.
Hi. Can you hear me?
We can. Yes, thank you.
Okay. My name is Cheryl Miller. I live at 10 Thesa Street. I am an autistic parent of two kids with disabilities in Arlington. At the last school committee meeting, I spoke about ableism in regard to special education accountability. Today, I'd like to speak about ableism and special education decision-making. But first, I'd like you to imagine a school system designed solely for boys, a system that regards boys as normative, where classroom teachers are taught how to teach boys and only boys, where traditional male interests and concerns are the focus of instruction, which shouldn't be too hard because that is part of our history. Now imagine that this system has to start serving girls, so they hire staff to decide what girls need in education. And they hire men, men who have come through and internalized the male-centric school system. These men will be in charge of deciding what girls need to receive in education. Does this sound right to you? "But it's okay," the school system will tell you, "because these men have studied girls. They've read the research. They have degrees in girl education. These men are experts." And so what if their degree courses were also taught by men, based on research conducted by men, in which girls and women were objects of study but were never actually consulted about their wants, needs, or experiences because it wasn't relevant? And any girls and women who disagreed with the conclusions were told that they were misinformed about their own experiences. I'll ask again. Does this sound right to you, or does it sound like sexism? This is exactly the way the special education system works right now in Arlington. The gen ed classroom is centered around able-bodied neurotypical students. They are considered the default, the norm. Special educators and administrators, mostly not disabled, make decisions for disabled students because they are regarded as experts in disability. They've studied disabled people. They have degrees, taught mostly by able people, based on research conducted mostly by able people, in which disabled people are the objects of study, but are never consulted about their wants, needs, or experiences because it isn't relevant. And Arlington Special Education is on the record before this committee stating that autistic people who experience behaviorism as traumatic are misinformed about their own experiences. And I will say that that attitude was not just expressed in that -- I've experienced that attitude up and down special education. This isn't an exaggeration. This is how decisions about students with disabilities in Arlington are made right now. Does this sound right to you, or does it sound like ableism? Thank you.
Thank you. So that -- those are our public speakers for tonight. We're also going to hear a sort of a public comment adjacent. We are going to hear from Toby Dexler and Rohan Pingal, also from the Addison. Thank you for coming. And you sent us some slides, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm going to pull them up. Thank you.
So we didn't have a -- we didn't bring any paper on us. Do you mind if we use our phones to just look at our slide show on our own?
No, not at all. By all means.
You all can tell me when to do the next one, and I'll move the slides.
Sounds good. Just speak up and speak into the microphone.
Do I need to state my name and the address?
Yes, please go ahead and tell us your name and address. It would be fantastic. Thank you.
Rohan Pingle, 42 Frost Street, Arlington.
Toby Steixler, 65 Falmouth Road.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. Today, we are presenting an interactive course catalog as our civic action project in Arlington High School. Next slide, please. So the current issue with the current program of studies that we use is that it's a text-heavy Google document, and students find it overwhelming and hard to navigate. It's changed every year and moved to different Google documents, and some electives have limited information that will reduce students' understandings of the courses, and it's an obstacle for planning for future coursework. We're concerned about elective availability, specifically for underclassmen, and the impact of the lack of clarity on student engagement and preparation. Next slide, please.
So the goal of our interactive catalog is to cater program studies that has clear course descriptions, filters, tags, and teacher info. So this is to provide underclassmen with a menu that makes it easy to find an elective offering for them. So audiences, the HHS students, the school committee, and advisory coordinators. So this is some of the feedback that we have received from a survey that we have done with the HHS community. So widespread sentiment is that 53% survey wanted at least some changes overall to the Google document system, and the lack of centralized, filterable database has been a problem.
And one other thing you'll notice is if you look at the survey distribution, you'll notice that 0% of the ninth graders, like the freshmen, did not really seem like to have any problems with the elective system at HHS. And we noticed from personal experience of our other group member, Yujia, who is an advisory presenter at HHS, that the ninth graders are very checked out when it comes to like these advisory presentations about electives. They don't really seem too aware about the choices that they will have in the elective system in general. Next slide, please. So we designed an interactive course catalog, which we will show kind of a video demo of in a moment, but from testing, we had students from all over different grades, and pretty much everyone said that they would use the interactive course catalog over the program studies and that they would recommend it to other students, and they found it like much simpler and easier to use.
So proposed actions is to raise awareness through posters and advisor APS announcements. So we've catered a prototype which has interface, filters, teachers, and popularity data. So we want to use surveys to get senior -- to get student feedback and teacher input.
So our key user base, we wanted to go into a bit more detail in. For students, we can provide a simpler experience to look at and select courses for the coming school years. Parents, for parents, it'll make it easier for them to assist their children in selecting their courses, and it'll help them understand the course selection process more effectively. The school administration will be able to have a simple and broad overview of the program studies, which includes interactivity and additional information if needed, which is great for collecting data about HHS courses. And school counselors that are assisting their students with selecting their final courses before the next year will have a great way to physically interact with the program studies and get a good picture of the student's course load, and the students and the counselor can directly collaborate on the spreadsheet. Next slide, please.
So some key performance indicators that we want to measure if our solution is effective or not is to have at least 75 post-launch survey responses. Our goal is to have over 70% positive rating on ease of course navigation, and 70% of students to say that they have clear understanding of the electives. So our goal is to have, in the first month of use, to have over 100 unique visits.
And we have an extended roadmap, which stretches basically for as long as we can support it until we graduate. Some key points would be a post-launch survey this July that we would launch, and we would collect data all the way until September in the 2025 to 2026 school year, and we would then implement that feedback into an updated version of the interactive course catalog, and we'd kind of continue doing this in half-year terms.
So our goal is to continue iterating and evolving our interactive course catalog for as long as we can support it and to provide these tools to students and all users. Once we like to -- once we -- once when we graduate, we want the administration to continue operating the system, and we've made sure to make it clear and easy to understand for future administrators to use.
So we are asking for an agreement from the -- sorry. We're asking for an agreement from the school committee, the superintendent, and the principal of HHS that the interactive course catalog is effective and approved for use by -- for HHS students. We would like the final product to be shared through the Arlington Public Schools newsletter, the course selection webpage, and the counseling Google classrooms as a resource. And we'd also like approval to gradually integrate the interactive course catalog into the Arlington Public Schools ecosystem over multiple years if it proves helpful for the administration and students. And finally, we would like the committee members here to test a prototype and provide two to three sentences of written feedback on a Google form.
Thank you.
Dr. Homie, can we share one thing with you? It has like the video demo.
Yes. How do you want me to pull it up? Do you?
It's just a Google slide. I can actually -- it's on Google Drive. I can just do that.
Yeah, can you share it with me?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just shared it.
Got it. All right. Hold on one second. All right. Good play.
Yeah. So this demo that we used, we wanted to showcase the history department, as there's a lot of diversity inside the courses offered there. As you can see, this Google sheet shows everything you really need to know about a course, especially for students. You can filter for, say, 2.5 credit classes, as you can see, which you can see there are half-year and regularly scheduled courses throughout the year. And if you wanted to, you could look for, say, an AP-only class to see the AP credit classes, all of which are listed here. And we also made a system where you can select certain things, and then go to the "Your Plan Courses" tab, which we will go to over there, and essentially, it'll calculate the amount of credits you will get for selecting different courses, which is great to get a good planned outlook of what your course load in the past and future can be. And eventually, we want to update that so it can tell you if you are passing graduation requirements for student grades. And we also have a graduation requirements tab that we recently added.
Yeah. We combined this from all the different resources that were posted by the school and to have it all on one page and easy to understand.
Great. Super. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. I think, you know, the -- and we talked a little bit over email before you came in, our role as a committee, we approve the program of studies, right? We would sort of delegate to our professional staff who are, you know, running our schools, how they would sort of disseminate that information to our students. I can tell you, you know, I personally want to test the prototype very much and provide two to three sentences of written feedback via Google form, so I would like to do that. I hope that all of my colleagues would be willing to do that as well. So if you can get that to us through either through me directly or through Ms. Diggins, we will make sure to get that done, especially if there's -- if you have like a time constraint, sort of, we need you to do this like this week. That would be really helpful to know. And I really like thinking about this idea. When I heard from you initially, I thought, yeah, you know, it is, you know, you're sort of scrolling through this Google Doc, and you're trying to kind of figure out what your choices are and what you can do, and anything that can make that easier and more accessible for students and families is certainly something that I want to support. So I wanted to see if any of my colleagues have any questions or feedback for all of you, but certainly, you know, we would love to test your prototype and engage with you. There is sort of, you know, there have been sort of student-run things that have happened at HHS in the past. There's a very popular app that the kids use to share their schedules with each other that is student-run, which, you know, has its own challenges, obviously, but I really encourage you to sort of, you know, follow through with this because it does seem to me to be a need that we could certainly meet. So does anybody else have any questions or feedback? Mr. Schickman?
I love this. I'm certainly happy to play with this. I can just see myself spending a couple hours just messing around, having a good time with it. I was, in my past work life, I was the administrative -- you know what Power School is, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I was the system -- I was in charge of that. Other people did most of the work, but I had to oversee it, so I know quite a bit about that kind of system. So it'll be interesting to see if, once this is developed -- see, I'm pushing this out further, is to -- now, if I'm certainly happy to play with this. I can just see myself spending a couple hours just messing around, having a good time with it. I was, in my past work life, I was the administrative, you know what Power School is, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I was the system, I was in charge of that. Other people did most of the work, but I had to oversee it, so I know quite a bit about that kind of system. So it'll be interesting to see if, once this is developed, see, I'm pushing this out further, is to, now, if you make your course selections, how does that get into the computer and off to play?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
In other words, I'm sitting here playing with the software, right? Okay, and I'm looking at this as, oh, wow, calculus, that sounds like fun, I'm gonna do that. And then there's painting, so I want to learn how to paint beautiful pictures and, oh, I can do that. And then there's a great African-American AP history, oh, that sounds like something I need to learn about, I'm gonna do that. So now, I've picked my courses. What happens at that point?
Well, you'd have a good view of like what you can take this year. And eventually, once course registration opens in the year, you would submit that. And as a student, you'd also discuss that with your school counselor, verify if everything like is working.
See, now, the next really cool step, which is probably a little advanced, but maybe there are some geeky people around this town, because this town is filled with geeky people, is to somehow find a way to get that exported in such a way that it can be used to get into the, into Power School. So it takes one step away from that, converting this to paper, paper to entry, and, you know. You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
But I love this. I mean, this is the kind of thing that just engages me and I'll have fun with it. Thank you for bringing it in.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
No, don't go away, there's seven of us.
We're not all necessarily going to ask questions. I just wanted to point out one thing that I think certainly, whenever we do something with this, we're gonna want to have this as a, we want to have this in parallel with the regular stuff because I'm thinking about our conference signup system, which routinely, or at least, I don't know about this. I don't remember hearing anything this year, not this year? Okay, great. Well, in the past, it has routinely crashed every time people try and sign up because everyone, you know, as soon as it opens, everyone tries to go on and the system's just not capable of handling hundreds of people. And I could see something like this having a high enough user, usage at certain times that it could potentially be overwhelmed, so that's all.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Me?
Oh, Dr. Homan.
Yes, so Yujah, Toby, and Rohan came to see me and share this with me. I want to congratulate you on a lovely pitch. That's a good sell because I think this is something that would really help a lot of students navigate and families navigate all of the different offerings we have. That doc is very long, it is very cumbersome, and we know that. And so streamlining it in a way that helps people navigate it and search for the sorts of things that they're looking for is a great idea. And I'm looking forward to thinking about how we can make this a useful tool in parallel to the program of studies. And we should think about all of the potential glitches we might encounter along the way. And I know that Dr. Jangor had considered it too and was excited about the possibility of making something that could be sustainable over time. So thanks so much for your work on this and for your very professional presentation.
Great, thank you so much. And to Christos, Avery, Sonia, Toby, Rohan, thank you so much for coming to see us tonight. We are here nineteen times a year. We have public comment at any and all of our, like at all of our meetings, starting at 6:30. As you navigate your way through the Arlington Public Schools and identify things that you think are going well or areas for improvement. And if you ever feel like coming back to see us, we always like hearing from you. You're the reason that we're here doing this work, you're the reason that our staff is here doing this work. So it's really important that we hear from you if there are things that you see, even, you know, outside of your projects for school, you know, hearing about your experiences or what you see needing improvement. It can be, it can be very small or very big. But please know that we're always here and we welcome you to come and see us. So thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is, I'm gonna hand off to Dr. Homan, the Massachusetts Inclusive Post-Secondary Education. There's a presentation and we have some students with us here as well, which is very exciting. So Dr. Homan, do you want to get us started?
Sure, I'm actually going to hand it off to Ms. Elmer to talk about what the program is and introduce our guests.
And Baron and Paul and Ms. Elmer can make their way up, so, thank you. MAPs, MAPC, MACY, it's had several inner iterations, right? And so now its current title is MAPC. Is that how we're saying it, Baron? And we've been direct participants as a site for the last four years now. Prior to that, students from Arlington would be enrolled in the Lab Collaborative, who was a partner with Middlesex Community College. And starting four years ago, really through Ms. Abdalnor, we made that connection directly. And so now we're direct partners with the program. And we've had several students go through now, and our current students are here with us tonight, Paul Conti and Baron de Los Angeles. So I'm gonna turn it over to you. And who has the presentation?
I believe I do. Hold on. I'll pull it up. Yes, I have it.
So thanks for having us tonight. I'm excited to tell you more about our program and for you to hear from our students about how it's helped them to make progress towards their goals. So MAPs, formerly known as MACI, if you want to go ahead to the next slide, is a state initiative that supports inclusive opportunities for students aged eighteen to twenty-two with intellectual and developmental disabilities, including ASD. We partner with Middlesex Community College. The program there is called RISE, RISE Scholars. And students participate in academic, social, and career development activities on college campus. That's a good question. MACI is a statewide initiative, so there's MACI programs all over the state. I think there's like twenty different colleges that participate. RISE is the particular program at Middlesex Community College. So RISE is a branch of MACI, essentially.
Would you define ASD, please?
Autism Spectrum Disorder.
Okay, thank you.
And we can go to the next slide. So why does this kind of work matter? Why is it important? I put some statistics up here. Only eighteen percent of young adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities, also called IDDD, enroll in post-secondary education programs. And this is compared to about forty percent of students nationwide. And in Massachusetts, it's as high as seventy-seven percent. So there's a big difference in the number of students with these kinds of disabilities that are having access to college programs. And less than thirty-five percent of adults with autism spectrum disorder report any form of community employment. And individuals with some college education but no degree, so even just taking a class or two classes can earn approximately thirty-one percent more annually than those with only a high school diploma. So who participates in this program? As I mentioned, it's students with IDDD, autism, or other low-incidence disabilities. You have to be, yes, autism, ASD and autism, it's the same thing. And ADHD actually would not qualify for you for this program in particular. Right, not on its own. So you have to be between the ages of eighteen and twenty-two. And there's kind of two different pathways. There's opportunities for students who have not passed MCAS but have completed other high school requirements. And then there's also students who may have passed MCAS, but their team still thinks they require more supports to make progress towards their post-secondary goals. So they're getting just more transition-based supports than academic supports or other supports like that. And also, obviously, a key part of it is that college has to be a part of your vision for what you want to do after high school. So not every student is interested in college, though this doesn't apply to everyone in that way as well. So what are some of the benefits? Students get access to real college courses. You can audit or take them for credit. Baron and Paul have.
I take credit, honestly.
They have taken all their classes for credit. And Paul will talk about this a little bit, but he's earned a lot of credit this way, which is really impressive. You get to use campus resources, so the library, clubs, the fitness center if you wanted to, the cafeteria, all that kind of stuff. They have social connections or opportunities, at least for social connections, with peers. Increases confidence. There's also job training and community-based internships. And there's development of adult life skills in an inclusive setting. So the idea is that the least restrictive environment for students in the situation that Paul and Baron are in is college and is the community. So there's some key roles that participate in the program at AHS. There's the students who apply to the program. They register for classes and they can take any of the classes that any other MCC student has access to. They attend orientation, they use campus supports. They participate in internships and in campus life. And they're generally working towards greater independence in many different ways. They, we also have what is called an ed coach, who is an SSP that supports the students on campus with academics, time management, and just kind of generally navigating the college campus and college life. The ed coach also promotes the students to be as independent as possible, to self-advocate, so to, you know, connect with professors when they need to. And they also make sure that students are connecting with the resources that they need on campus. And then there's me, the transition coordinator. I liaise with the program director from MCC and we have monthly stakeholder meetings. I train and oversee the ed coach. And I also help make sure that students are connecting with the resources that they need on campus and in the community. And some of the program outcomes are that students are more likely to be employed after leaving school. And actually, both of these guys are already employed. They're more likely to engage in lifelong learning. They're more confident and independent in adult roles. And some of the things that our students have gone on to pursue or have pursued while they're in the program is interest in STEM fields, psychology, education, and more. So now Paul and Baron are gonna speak. So Paul's gonna go first. Paul, do you want me, do you want to read, tell a little bit about yourself first?
Yeah, I've been in the RISE program for, RISE MACI, I was never too clear on the specifics of which name is which. Yeah, there are two years, taking six classes, taking six classes, including Calculus II. Calculus II, I'll just say, yeah, I took Calculus II, Macroeconomics, English one and two, interpersonal communication thing, and psychology. I've had jobs with the IT department here over the last, over the past summer and likely this summer as well, and the cafe down the street a bit. If you've gotten a coffee there on a Friday, you may have seen me. So this coming fall, I'll be switching over to going as a full-time student in UMS Lowell and with the courses I've taken, I'm at least starting there as a sophomore. And if you can, I'm assuming that screen is to also show that because I haven't, yeah, you can see like what I'd be majoring in, mechanical, focusing on aerospace, because, yeah, space is cool. I wrote this speech not knowing everything about it, so like, some of it's a bit redundant, but, like, so the first, yeah, the first paragraph is a bit redundant, so I'll keep going then. Yeah, but, yeah, now, without the program, I imagine I would rather had a tough time adapting to dorm life or tried to get, do the adapting over a gap year and had an entire year's worth of summer rain drain. Figured it was a win-win considering, yeah, I'm not, I'm a bit impatient to commute to any of the four-year colleges around with the amount of course loads they have, at least. Yes. To instead, I'm happy to take advantage of a community college, even if it's, yeah, where RISE puts a positive spin on the sometimes derisively calling them thirteenth grade. The, yeah, without, yeah, without, and finally, I actually managed to know that, to scram if I'm having a meltdown. That's a nuclear reactor joke. Yeah, so, yeah, to actually get away from the situation if it is causing problems that I cannot actively fix in my state. Instead of needing someone else to like grab a hook and pull me off the stage like in an old cartoon. Yeah, and, yeah, even if that job I have is only a five hours, one day in the week, it is still a job that I have. And I did, and of course, the IT thing had more, had more, had more hours in it as well. And plus, having these two years able to, living at home and going a thing, I was able to stick around for the entire lifespan of the family cat. I know that's not necessarily a common thing, but still, I felt like it was worth saying. And the last paragraph is also some redundancies. May not have communicated well about what parts had been already said by the time I did the speech. Oh, well. But, yeah, I've gotten a glon out of RISE, including some of the support connections had me turn what could have been a problem into making a connection when I missed a bus, way overreacted to what was really, just missed a campus shuttle, which would be a walk, overreacted to try and catch up to it. And this ended up turning into the, I do not remember the exact position of the person I went to talk to about that, but turns out he's the husband of the head of the UMS Lowell Engineering Department, so I have an in there.
Okay. Okay, my name is Baron de Los Angeles. To all of you who are here, I would like to wish each and every one of you a good day. As you all know, I am one of the lucky few to be on the spectrum and have been very fortunate to be in the MAPC program. This program gave me the opportunity to enroll in college courses in a middle, from Middlesex Community College. And at the same time, receive special education services from Arlington High School. MAPC allowed me to experience how a college life should be, to be more independent and to take more responsibility for myself. It took me a while to adjust, but this program provided me great ed coaches such as Bridgette and Sydney. And they have been able to help me focus on my tasks and keep track of how I am doing in class so that I can work with my speech language pathologist, social worker, and transition coordinator to work on my goals. Another benefit I received from MAPC is that I was able to get a job. I work, I now work part-time at Walgreens, checking and throwing out expired food and making sure items are in the correct order by expiration date.
May I ask which Walgreens? There's two in this town.
I think, I chose to be in the one near Spy Pond because it's a much nearer place than the one in Arlington Heights.
For you, at least for me, it's the opposite.
Yeah. And MAPC helps me focus and improve whenever I make mistakes. One time, I did make a mistake at work and when my boss told my team that I needed more assistance, I was able to get, had that from my ed coach and it worked out efficiently. MAPC is also helping me gain independence. I can now travel locally by using public transportation. And as a risky person, I also like to walk alone a lot to pick up mom. And I even use the public bus to go to MCC. Hopefully, one day, I will be able to do more things on my own. I want to be able to work on my own and maybe even do an educational program on my own as well. This program gives me freedom to work on college classes and be with both college students with disabilities and general education students. I believe that MAPC will give me support I need for my post-secondary education. And hopefully, I will be able to graduate and pursue the profession I want. I would like to thank you all for your effort. and pursue the profession I want. I would like to thank you all for your effort to make MAFC available so all students can have a better future and be part of a well-diverse community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any questions? That's the next slide.
Probably thank you so much for coming. Questions from the committee? Dr. Alison Ambey?
Thank you. I really appreciate hearing your stories. And I think it's wonderful, which college is, I mean, which?
It's Middlesex Community.
Middlesex Community, okay.
That's what I said. I said that earlier.
Yeah. And I'm wondering if or when you go on to four-year colleges, what supports continue there? I mean, I think this is wonderful. And it feels like, I want to, I-
For me, at least, UMass Lowell has the RISE, has another, now that, thanks, sorry, got confused, Horizons program, which is similar. It's with having students, giving students access to supports at the place. So that should be fine on my end. And of course, campus dining, so I don't necessarily need to get, get all done with like cooking and knowing that I'll be good at actually putting something that isn't raw food poisoning or charcoal. I can, I know I'm good, I know I can do it fairly well, but I still just, I, my brain does not, does not like it when I do not have an explicit timer of, hey, it's done now. Yeah.
Baron, do you want to add anything? Other supports?
So there are also community supports that Baron and Paul will be accessing when they're done with the AHS and the APS Public School System. They will get support through DDS, the Department of Developmental Services. They have something called the College Navigator Program, which provides, it doesn't provide like in-class support like they've been getting, but it does provide on-campus supports to, again, help make sure that the students are accessing the resources and just, you know, being able to get around the campus, find the things that they need. They also both get services through Massability, which helps them with finding work. Also, again, the same types of things, like making sure that they're able to get the supports and resources that they need on campus.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Homan?
Paul, what's the major at UMass Lowell?
Mechanical engineering.
Mechanical engineering.
And I hope to leverage that into aerospace if there's a, if a specialization shows up.
Because space is cool. Got it.
Yeah, and rockets and stuff. And like, I am not the most physically fit, so I probably wouldn't be in the rockets, but I figure building them's cool enough.
I wouldn't want to be in the rocket myself. And what are some of, and this is for both of you, what were some of your favorite classes at Middlesex?
I like first-year experience and public speaking and filmmaking. I think, at first, I'm not much into public speaking. It's not really into my interests, but I, but I'm, I think it's a really good class, though.
You're good at it.
Yeah, really good at this.
I like my English, I'll wait for him to finish.
This class will be good for making scripts of my, of videos. Yeah. 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 Yeah, I want to be a YouTube content creator, such as, such as playing video games and making music. And making animations, too.
Yeah, and I liked my English two class in the fall semester. Teacher's a cool guy who actually lives, lives in this town, I figured out. I overheard. I do not, yeah, got me to do a lot in terms of writing papers and stuff. And, yeah, my dad noticed some snippets of one of, of some stuff I wrote recently, recently-ish, that I've been using for snippets, and he really liked them. He wishes he could have read them one earlier. So I still need to show him those at some point.
So I just wanted to add that Ms. Abdell Noor, as our transition coordinator, has really helped to support this program and to grow it. Like I said, when we started out, we used to have to go through lab collaborative, but now we're doing the Strudely, which does include now the travel training, which Baron, you referenced, being able to take transportation now. That's actually part of getting out to MCC with the ed coach. There is also what we have at APS. Next year, we started this year with some job coaching for community-based job experiences. And we're going to be expanding that to a few more students. And Baron will be next year. You'll be back at MCC. And then I believe another student is joining him next year.
Yep. Yeah. This time with new, with new classes, although I have to, although the schedule for, of the classes has to change for at least.
Right, each semester, you have a new schedule.
Yes, it is. Yeah.
Right, so I just also wanted to thank, you know, Ms. Abdell Noor, she's done a lot to support this program.
Thank you also for your support of making this program happen. It's such important work, and it really makes a difference in the outcomes for students like Paul and Baron.
Thank you. Thanks so much for coming.
And you are allowed to have snacks.
Let's go.
He's not. He got off. He had somewhere to go.
So we're just going to keep going in order then.
Yep.
Otherwise, we think, that's fine. Great. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Student Services Review Preview.
Yes.
This is not the Student Services Review, which we will have on June 17. This is a brief preview. This was initially slated for the CIA Subcommittee Meeting on June 2nd due to some, some scheduling challenges and earlier presentations getting kind of moved forward. They didn't have room for this in their agenda on Monday. So we're going to have the preview here tonight. And then we look forward to the presentation when we meet on the 17th. Dr. Homan?
Okay, I'm going to do this quick update as I was going to do it at the CIA Subcommittee Meeting. You've just helped me notice that this is a preview of a review. We'll have the full review of the review on the 17th, and we'll have our consultants with us. But they weren't able to come sooner to present. So I just wanted to give everybody an update on where this stands and a little bit of a preview of what some of the findings and recommendations are. We'll be sharing a full finalized plan as soon as we get the final draft from our consultants, which should be well in advance of the next meeting so that folks can read through it. And then I also wanted to sort of go over like why we did this. And we, I might do a very brief introduction that goes over this again at the next meeting, but I won't belabor the point. But I do want to sort of go back to why this happened in the first place and provide a little bit of context for the review itself. When we do internally commissioned reviews, the goal is continuous improvement and formative assessment at the district level. So it's an opportunity for us to say, how is this program going? Or all of the programming associated with it. It's an opportunity for us to ask specific questions about specific initiatives that are happening at that time. In this case, we have the strategic plan, and it articulated that in year two, which is the year that we're in, that we would start to implement a curriculum review cycle. This is more of a program review. And we decided to start here in part because we had a reason to. We had a bargaining agreement that articulated some specific things that we might want to work on in order to make sure that our caseloads, our classes are balanced. And that's work that we're doing right now. And so because we had that, and because we hadn't done a review of student services for quite a while, we thought that this would be a place to start some of this formative review work. But these reviews are intended to be an opportunity for us to take a look at programming and make sure that we are doing what we say we're going to do and we're sticking to the values and implementation that we say we want to stick to. And so one of our goals for this year's review was to take a look at our implementation of our strategic plan initiatives surrounding MTSS, understanding that those align very significantly to the work that we do in student services. This was the initiative that was tied to MTSS that we asked the consultants to focus on because if you have a well-designed MTSS, then you have a continuum of services that makes it very clear what the process would be in order for a student to gain support. And that's support in intervention, that is support through a specialized service, that is support that is short-term, long-term, but should be flexible and according to the needs of the student and quickly identified. And so that is the MTSS framework. It includes special education, student services within it. But if we're thinking about structures and systems associated with providing students with service if they need it, then we have to think about that whole big picture. So, you know, we defined MTSS in the strategic plan as a cohesive system for procedures and resources that fit together in order to ensure a high-quality education for all students. And that very much includes any specific services that students might access through counseling, mental health, special education, nursing, or any of the other departments that fit within special education, student services. The secondary goal of this year's review was to make sure that we were implementing effective contract provisions that were part of the AA bargaining agreement that I mentioned a moment ago. So starting in the 2526 year, which is next school year, for scheduling purposes in all classrooms, we have this provision that says that the number of students with IEP should not exceed 50% of the total number of students in the class. That includes co-taught classrooms. It does not include substantially separate special education programs, small group special education classes, small group general intervention classes, and monotony preschool. This provision was new. And the goal of it was to make sure that we were sticking to best practice that said that we were providing the least restrictive environment for any students who have an IEP. And we've never had a provision like this before. There is some degree of concern among some leaders and some teachers about our ability to enact this with the resources that we have. We've been planful about that. We've included a lot of resources in FY26 budget in anticipation of this. And we wanted to get recommendations about how to effectively implement this provision under the umbrella of MTSS as a framework. And so that's sort of a goal that we also shared with the consultants as the reason why we were asking them to do a program review specific to student services. So I want to give a quick preview of findings. I'll give a quick preview of recommendations associated with those. I will ask Ms. Elmer, because she's here. She wasn't going to be here for the CIA meeting, where I was originally going to present this, if she has anything to add. So, so you can think about that while I talk, in case you have anything to add. And then we'll take some questions. So interviews and review of materials noted a few things amongst interviewees. And I will note that there are limits to this study. They interviewed a lot of people, but they interviewed mostly leadership. In special education, they also interviewed team chairs who don't, aren't leadership. They're not in a collective, they're not in a bargaining unit that's an administrative one or on administrative contracts. But also interviewed CPAC, the CPAC leadership, and members of the school committee, members of central administration, and principals. And that's all going to be outlined in the full study. But their interviews revealed a few findings that stood out that I wanted to just give a quick preview on. One is that the development of responsive and thoughtful programs that enable students to be successful within district schools is something that exists now. So that a finding was, we have those. We have strong and consistent practices and protocols enabling the special education process to work effectively and efficiently for students, staff, and families. There is commitment to a culture of collaboration, curiosity, and mutual respect. That we could identify solutions, this is something we can work on, and there's recommendations associated with it, that would offer a range of special education, general education programming options. That would in turn provide more opportunities for students to stay directly supported by and involved in the Arlington Public Schools. So they, they were working towards identifying what those solutions would be. And they were working on finding clear and flexible guidelines for implementing that collective bargaining language. Some of their findings were that language would, language is important, that we need clear communication around what the implementation would look like, clear communication around what our models are. So when we say inclusion, what do we mean? When we say co-teaching, what do we mean? When we talk about the tiers, one, two, three, what do we mean? And what falls within that? And so those are some of the things that interviewees would like to see us work on. Strong, consistent practices and protocols that have clear articulation of what our terms are and what we expect to see in SST, for example. They want to see us work on some of the culture pieces that get in our way when we have a relationship with a family that gets rocky. They want really a lot of clarity on how we go about identifying solutions and implementing them in a responsive way for students. So these are some of the things that surfaced from those interviews. And then here are some of the recommendations that were associated with those. Like I said, clarity surrounding roles and responsibility in making special education determinations and taking part in the special education process was requested. I think this is particularly salient when you think about like a building-based role or a district-based role. What's the principal's role in weighing in on something that's going to have an impact on district resources? If you have a schedule built and you have services attached to that, the principal's thinking about how are these resources going to work, given that they're already in place, but now we have a new need that has come up. And so the principal can, can have a lot of input on that. And the special education team is the determining voice. And so what that feels like or looks like, we had interviewees asking for clarity around that. So that's one of the recommendations, is that we make clear what the roles and responsibilities are. Another one is that we consistently implement expectations regarding the IEP team process. This is something we've talked about and that we've heard also from CPAC on occasion, which is like, what is that IEP team process supposed to look like? Are we consistent across schools and in our communication, in surveying, and asking for feedback, and in just the process itself, and making sure that we get back to folks in a timely manner, not just according to regulation, but in a way that makes families feel supported. Articulating, and another recommendation was that we articulate that continuum of services in writing for the broader community. That would be part of MTSS work that we would do over the summer and as we rolled it out next year. There was also, there were also recommendations around assertive and clear articulation of our approach to inclusion, and recommendations around ongoing professional learning. So some of those recommendations include PD regarding tiered intervention, inclusion expectations, disability categories, and options for providing individualized services to students, both within and outside of special education. A need for us to reaffirm our vision for MTSS and for an inclusion model, clarity about the similarities and differences between the different inclusion models that we have in the district. We have several. And what the district's support for those look like. And then making sure that we have a clear and accountable plan for implementation, and that people know what that implementation involves and is going to look like or mean for them if it means that they need to change a practice. And so obviously, there are going to be a lot more details in the report itself. But these are some of the highlights of things that you can expect to see that came out of interviews that they conducted with folks. So what's next is that Bill Lupini and Cindy Tamar, these are the consultants who conducted the review. They're also former superintendents. They've both been executive directors of special education collaboratives and special education administrators in their careers. They're going to join the regular school committee meeting on June 17. We have, we will, or we already have, shared the report with the APS community. We will do that along with our planned steps in response following that presentation. We have aligned our 2526 goals to recommendations from the report. And in response to feedback as we've worked through the goals, we're planning professional learning to support action on these recommendations right now actively with the administrative team and based on feedback we've gotten from educators over the past few months. And we plan to return to the document to inform and reflect on the effectiveness of our action steps over the next few years. Ms. Elmer, did you have anything to add to findings or recommendations that stands out to you?
No, just a clarification. They actually interviewed coordinators, not team chairs.
Oh, yeah. They did interview team chairs, too. It was on their list.
Oh, yeah. And so I think there are things that were already in motion that we're working on, which is part of the process we've had with Dr. Lupini and Dr. Tamar. So I think when we have a final report and recommendations, we'll see that some things we can probably report on where we already are in the process of outlining some of their recommendations.
They also reviewed the FY26 budget and several other documents and the website to look at what communications currently look like, and some other presentations and materials that we had provided for them ahead of time. And the bargaining agreement, obviously. We'll take any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Mr. Carden?
Thanks. So I'll read through the report, but when, you know, you presented the proposal, you had a long list of questions and requirement. Did they address those questions, or did they just do the sort of their standard? I was trying to shift it, you know, and I added some language to try to shift it away, including removing the word recommendations, because that's sort of the standard format that other districts might follow. But I thought we were looking for something a little bit more tailored. And I'm curious as to whether they really did that, or sort of just did a normal thing.
So they had, they did have a list of questions that we had tweaked with them ahead of their interviews. And they, to my knowledge, used those questions in the interviews. And then they probed certain questions in the interview, so they may not have gone. They weren't, like, you- They weren't, like in the interview they did with me, they were not lockstep through those questions, and they may have had some questions that they didn't do with some people. So, you'd have to ask them how they conducted that. They did keep things very confidential in between, so like, we don't, if they have a quote in the report, Allison and I don't necessarily know who said that thing. They did, like, I would have to go look at some of the methods that, they lay this out in the report what their methodology was, so maybe some questions will be answered there, and then, obviously, they come so that you can ask some of those questions. But they did break it into findings and recommendations. They also noted for each area, some, any strengths that they could identify in that area that are things that we could build upon as a foundation.
Okay, I'll wait to see. It's done, we'll see what they present. Thanks.
Anybody else? Next, we have the second read of the 2027-2028 district calendar. We saw this six days ago. We're seeing it again. Any, I'm looking for a motion to, well, any additional things that we've missed on this one? Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the 2027-2028 district calendar as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Yes?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Great, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a second read and possible vote of the 2025-2026 district goals.
Are we skipping the handbook?
Nope. We're going back to the handbook. We did skip the handbook, and now we're going back to it. So, we need to do a first read of the Arlington High School 2025-2026 student handbook. We received in Novus the change log and a draft. We also received a, like, marked-up copy via email. So, if folks have things to share about the handbook, I think ideally, if you can get them in writing to Dr. Holman with page numbers attached, is helpful, so that we're in a position to be able to ideally approve this on the 17th, so that it can be loaded correctly into Power School, so that when families do their, you know, acceptance of the handbook, they're actually accepting the one that we approved. So, is there, with that in mind, is there anything that folks have for tonight around the first read of the handbook?
Can I just note that, like, I can't answer questions because I have not had a chance to review it, and neither has our council, but council has it and actually did give us comments, like, today. So, we're going to integrate those, and there are some things there. She sent us several notes. I have notes from a couple of you. I'm very happy to take the written feedback. I'm not very able to respond to questions tonight, but we should have a substantially adjusted copy in a couple of weeks, and would love any questions that you have. The high school team has combed through it in detail, and we'll probably have a middle school combined handbook for our next meeting also, and that's going to be one handbook for Edison and Gibbs, same handbook, for the first time this year. So, we're actively working on that now, right now, too.
When can we expect a, like, complete-ish version of the handbook for our second read? Because I don't want to, yeah, I just, I don't want to get the second read version of the handbook on the 16th.
Well, the changes that will be in there will be based on your feedback, my read, and of course, with council, we're going to change anything that she says is not regulatorily advisable. But that's, those are the only things we're going to change. So, I think this is, this has been reviewed by the high school administration. The thing that remains is your review, my review, and lawyer's review.
Okay.
I'm happy to integrate the comments and then send you all that version, once the lawyer has reviewed it, if you'd like to see multiple drafts, but I also don't want to confuse folks with version control challenges.
Right. I think it's just, it's helpful for us to know, like, when, because we actually, unlike, unlike some, we actually do have almost two weeks before we are going to look at this again. So, it would just be helpful to understand what the cadence is for making those changes, because let's say hypothetically, somebody else on the committee said, you know, I'd like to see A, B, and C, and those changes are integrated, but I disagree with B and C, right? I want to have the opportunity to review B and C before we come back to vote on it, right? That's where it gets, like, kind of tricky.
So, I, if folks could get comments to me in a week, no. By Tuesday of next week, then we could probably turn around a draft by Thursday or Friday with those integrated. And I am also okay with us, if we don't hit a point where folks feel like they can vote on it on the 17th, having, maybe having a Zoom meeting at some point in the summer to approve final versions, because we also have not gone through, my goal was to have all of them for you, and we have a lot of things we're trying to wrap up at the end of school year. So, we just haven't quite gotten there, but we're close. I think we'll probably want you to receive elementary ones at some point. We could do that at the beginning of the school year after we've finalized them. It's not a vote required on those, but I'd prefer folks see them. If you have comments on them, provide them ahead of us, putting them in the back-to-school form for families to vote. So, that's also an option. But that said, I think if we had comments in about five days, we could turn around a new copy by the end of next week. That seems like it would be manageable, and then we could integrate more comments if we got more feedback on anything that had shifted.
Okay, and if we need to course correct, we can make that adjustment. Mr. Schlickman?
I very much appreciate the change log. I think it's a very helpful tool, because prior to this, it was always kind of messy trying to figure out what was different from the previous year, even without underlines and stuff. This is just very explicit, so that any changes made from this point on, be it by council or after reflection of what other people have given its feedback, as long as that ends up in the change log, I'm pretty comfortable.
That was an effort, so that is to the credit of the AHS administration, and most of the changes that happen from here forward are going to happen at the district level. So, I will try to get my hands on that change log and try to make it clear that we should get stuff on there.
Or making the second one, but this is really helpful.
Yeah, that's good to know.
So, you know, whether you started off a new one beyond this point for the administration, the central administration's changes, it's irrelevant whether it's on the same document or corresponding document, but that'll be a very helpful tool for us to understand what's going on, make reviewing the document after the next version is published or presented to us a lot easier.
Okay.
Ms. Exon. Thank you. I agree that the change log is really helpful, and at the same time, I'm noticing a lot of the changes and additions, and I appreciate sort of the, like, please send me your, you know, suggestions for changes, but I guess I'm looking, like, for example, at the cell phone piece, and it, based on this, it looks like it's a new, newly put into the handbook. And I guess I personally would like a little bit of a conversation around this. I think it's based on past practice, but now that we're putting it into a document, I mean, like, or a backpack.
Not in the change log, though.
And the, is that in Novus? Is that what you're?
The cell phone, where are you seeing that?
I don't see a phone, a change to the cell phone policy.
So, this is, this is what was there last year?
Yeah.
I'm looking at the live pieces.
So, there's one, there's one edit on the live document, so that would be a change, deleting in a backpack.
Deleting a backpack.
So, that's the change, if not in the change log, but it's a minor change.
That's, so the, so honestly, the comparison doc is, we do the comparison doc because of the request for a log of changes, and that is a much swifter and more, I mean, it's going to be more accurate, because it's literally going to compare this document to that document, log of changes, than creating a separate log, which is redundant with the comparison doc, and is that, that log is, you're never going to capture every single detail of every single edit that you make. So, I would much prefer, just sort of operationally and pragmatically, to continue to provide these comparison documents. We did that with program of studies. We're doing it here. And refer you to that, overpromising a change log, that I'm a little worried is going to miss little things like this, because it was an edit someone made at some point as they were reading through it. Also, keeping up in that log with everything that changes from all of the different people involved. I can see how the AHS administration can do it. When we also then add in a lawyer and a communications folks, I'm worried we're going to miss something if people rely solely on that.
Ms. Exon, I flagged that backpack omission, that backpack deletion as one of my questions as well, in a long list of them, that if, that is not the current practice. Currently, kids can leave their cell phones in their backpacks. Not all classrooms have, you know, places to put your phones, and it seems, so I do think there are some substantive changes, right? If phones must be stored in a designated area away from the student's desk, that's a significant change in practice. So, I guess I want to, I'd like to hear more about that, too.
No, I, yes, I would like to hear more about it, and based on what I've heard, this year, there's inconsistency in its application. And so, I, I guess as our first read, like, this is the opportunity where we're supposed to be able to talk about the policies that are in this handbook, to be able to approve it at the next meeting. And so, you know, I mean, I think we've gotten a lot of feedback from families over the course of the year, last summer. On cell phones, we haven't really had a committee discussion about them. This feels like the opportunity. Like, I don't, I don't have a big position. I'm not suggesting that they put them in a yonder box, pocket at the beginning of the day or anything, but I do think that it is a conversation that we as a committee should have, and maybe it's something for next year that, you know, policy considers. Handbooks go to policy before they come to us, but I think it's a, it's a, it's a big conversation, it's a big concern in our community, and I think we should talk about it at some point.
Agreed. And I do think the removal of backpacks as storage is a huge change in practice.
I'm sure Dr. Jengker will be happy to come and explain it, too, where that's.
Right, it's just the challenge now is that he would come and explain it at the same time as we would be positioned to vote it. So, maybe we do a first read on the 17th and we, because I just don't like being, like, under pressure on these things, and maybe, maybe this is our, in the same way that we previewed the student services review, this is our preview of the handbook. We can do a first read on the 17th when we're more, like, settled, and then come back at some point. We could, we could need a July remote meeting anyway. That seems, there's a reasonably, reasonable likelihood that's necessary.
I'm okay with that.
So, maybe we plan to do that. Is that, is there comfort in that? Dr. Allison Napi?
Yeah, I wasn't answering that.
You don't have to answer that question. You can, you can speak on whatever you wish.
No, I agree that this feels like it is making a new policy, which we haven't discussed, and I'm personally not comfortable with, and would want to have significantly more discussion about it before I would agree with that. And I missed it because I only looked at the change log, I think so.
Is it just, just to help me, or people who, so is, was there something in here before? All of this red is new and didn't exist at all, but the heading electronic devices existed? Was there anything in here before? Or is both the heading and the cell phone new? Does anybody know? Because, like, why is it cell phones and electronic devices red as well?
I think.
He changed the formatting, is I think why it's red. And I, that was not what I was noticing, if it was red and I was reading it. So, I interpret it as new text, but it's not. It was the formatting. He changed the font.
If you click on it, it'll, like, highlight the thing.
It'll tell you what happened.
That is the, yep.
Gotcha, all right. I'm with you all now. Okay. All right, so, but the, the, the material change is the removal of backpacks as an appropriate storage mechanism.
Okay. I'm, I'm looking at 24, just because that's what, I mean, 23, 24, so not last year, not this year, but the year before, and it doesn't mention anything. I mean, it talks about you're not supposed to use them, it doesn't mention anything about storage.
We had a new policy last year that we worked on over the summer last year in response to questions and concerns we had received from parents. We had a discussion with families over the summer, and then, all three levels, Gibbs, Edison High School, had a conversation about how they wanted to create a developmentally stair-stepped policy. Gibbs and Edison used very similar, the same policy verbiage, I believe, and then Arlington High had a slightly different version of it. So, that was a new policy last school year. I did also, when I sent this to council, one of the questions that they came back to me with, that our lawyer came back to me with, was why aren't we doing this in the summer? All of my other districts do this in the summer. So, we are very much ahead of what most districts do. There's always a provision that says the handbook is subject to change. This is the version as of now, and we've always given them the previous version. And I said, I understand wanting to do this sooner, so that families are actually signing off on the version that will be for that year, and that we can put the that-year student handbook version in the agendas, which I went back and forth with the Edison principal on today, because they have to order the agendas in June. So, it's a positive step that we're more in front of it, and if there's going to be substantive discussion, we would have to be even more in front of it. And we haven't always had the opportunity to have substantive discussion on some of these policies, because we're doing it in the fall and school has started. So, there's a significant shift here in timing, and we're sorry we didn't get it to you before now, but this is what we can manage.
There, on the cell phone one, so we approved the handbook for AHS at a September 12th, 2024 school committee meeting. In that meeting, there is a fairly substantive FAQ on the cell phone policy, which has a lot of this stuff in it. So, that probably, I mean, we can certainly, we should certainly talk about it, but that certainly, that does address a lot of these, but I specifically have a question about the removal of backpacks as an appropriate storage mechanism. That's, that's, that's asking kids, students, to sort of relinquish their device in a way that we've, mandate the relinquishment of a device in a way that we have not historically done. So, I guess I need to hear a lot more about the rationale for that, what are, how we're actually going to implement that, and what our, what our risk is in having that be the expectation in the handbook, irregardless of how teachers choose to implement it on the ground, if that's helpful. Anything else on this? So, I think we will plan to, so, a little bit looser in terms of the next Tuesday, next Thursday, like, if we're going to first read this on the 17th.
That's fine.
If we can get it on the, you know, with the, in the, with the 48 hours, so by end of day Friday. We'll assume that where we're at end of day Friday is what we're going to first read on Tuesday.
Yes, and if there are specific topics you'd like Dr. Jengker to answer questions on, like this one, it'd be helpful to know what those are, because he can prepare some presentation around, like, where did that change come from, or what do we talk about and think about in making it?
Great. And Ms. Diggins, can we get that early on the agenda so that Dr. Jengker can come and we can do it, and then, because it does seem like he's going to be important today. Great, anybody else? Okay, let me, I can't read this thing, so now, let's see, I did, we did our handbooks, we did the calendar. Now, we are on a second read and possible vote of the 2025-2026 district goals. We read these. goals, we read these in, we read these six days ago, they were discussed very briefly at CIA on Tuesday, and we are here tonight to potentially vote to approve them. Is there anybody who would like to talk about these goals before we entertain a motion to approve them? See, oh, Mr. Schlickman?
Yeah, I really commend the superintendent on her willingness to work with us and to even make minor tweaks, and I think that it's on point. The one thing I wanna note is that there's the discussion here, and let me see if I can't get the exact language, for goal three, implementing systemic approach to operational functions of the district, including budget planning implementation, capital improvements, day-to-day response to operational challenges. At first read, I don't think people appreciate how challenging it is to move a district in this area, and I'm very, I, I think it's a really important thing to do, I'm really grateful that it's on the list, and that we've got people here working who are committed to making this happen. It, it's sitting there in goal three, but it's really something very powerful, and if we're successful at that, it's gonna very much improve our ability to function as a district.
Great, thank you, Mr. Schlickman. I'm looking for a motion to approve the 2025-2026 district goals as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Yes, opposed? None, abstentions? None, great, thank you very much. Superintendent's report, Dr. Holman.
Okay, this is brief as-
We were just here six days ago.
I've, I've just recorded-
Try and say that three times, we're outdated.
Okay, we are very much looking forward to graduation on Saturday at Piercefield at 1:00 PM, and we have had some really fun opportunities for our graduating seniors in full cap and gown to visit some of their elementary schools. Pictured here are our Thompson seniors and our Stratton seniors at Thompson and at Stratton. The turnout has been, like, we've done this a couple of times, and we've done it in different schools each year, this year there's been a really concerted effort by all the elementary principals to make sure everybody knows when the clapouts are, and when there are celebrations happening at the elementary schools, where the graduating seniors can come back and say hi to the younger students, and show them what it's like to graduate from Arlington High, and take some pictures, so all, that's happening now, we have a lot more schools on the calendar for the next couple of weeks, and the turnout's been fantastic, and it's been really, really fun for the elementary teachers to see the seniors and to say, good luck and happy trails and whatever your next adventure is, so congratulations.
I just wanna add to, Dr. Holman, I think one of the fun things about this is that, yes, they are predominantly Arlington High School graduates, but they are also Minuteman graduates, Arlington Catholic graduates, they are all graduates of Stratton Elementary School or Thompson Elementary School, but then they are students, and you can tell-
You can see, cause the gowns are different color.
The gowns are different, right? But there are kids from, from multiple different high schools who then come back, which is, is pretty cool.
Very cool. So that's been a lot of fun these last couple of days, and then I also wanna-
Just on that, that point, one other thing, is that one of the really nice things we do at graduation is recognizing a teacher from each of the seven elementary schools as designated by the senior class, so there's, there's a turnaround in there that I think is just beautiful.
I also wanted to share with the committee and the community that we did a screen time strategies for summer workshop for families, our social workers did this, this week on, yesterday, Tuesday evening in the discourse lab, and it was met with resounding appeal, and it was suggested that maybe we should do a virtual option, so they are going to hold an in-person version of the same workshop next week on Tuesday evening, and- You mean, I'm sorry, a virtual version? Yes, a virtual version, so they did it in person in the discourse lab this week, they're doing another one next week.
Which requires screen time.
Did I say in person? What did I say?
I don't think it's all good.
Sorry, I'm very tired. But the first one was in person, the second one will be virtual and recorded, and then you can register to attend it using the QR code, we're gonna get some messaging out about this for families in case they want to attend, I think it was very much appreciated by families to learn some strategies that they might be able to use to make sure students are active and interacting with one another in the summer, and there are a lot of families asking, how do I handle screens these days with a student who really enjoys being on one? So our social workers are happy to help families with this, and it's been a lot of fun to hear about some of the work they're doing to build connections with families as well, so tell your friends, and we'll post it online as well, and we're grateful for the efforts that they've put into developing this, and for the positive reception, and that's all I have for tonight.
Great, questions are coming.
Did you wanna say anything about the-
Well, only then, Wesley asked that you announce about the safe school.
Hold on, I have another one.
Walking to schools.
Oh, the, we are working on safe routes to school.
A survey has been sent out to families-
A survey has been sent to families.
About the safe routes to school program.
Thank you, it opened today, it closes on 6:23, there are gonna be new interactive maps of safe walking routes at every single building at the start of next school year, thank you, Ms. Pierre, and Ms. Elmer, and I'll update on that again in a couple of weeks, but we definitely want families to take the survey before 6:23, and we'll make sure that we re-message a reminder about that, so that we can have walking routes widely published before we start school in the fall.
And thank you, eventually, we are gonna, we're in the, we're still working on a safe routes to school program with significant funding from the state up at Stratton, too, so they will have safer routes to school. All right, any questions, comments for Dr. Holman and her superintendent report? Moving on to the consent agenda, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. School committee draft meeting minutes, May 29th, 2025, district calendar 2025-2026, with conference dates updated. Looking for a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Subcommittee liaison reports and announcements, budget, Dr. Allison Ampe?
We'll be scheduling for the next coming week.
Community relations, Ms. Gittleson?
We're meeting on Monday.
Still hearing about that meeting, huh? I guess we were only here six days ago. CIA, Ms. Exon.
We met on Monday, we had a presentation from some Edison eighth graders about some things they're thinking about around graffiti in the bathrooms, we had a long presentation about heterogeneous grouping initiatives, and then we had a very brief pre-presentation of the student services review, and we went over the district goals, and we do not have any more meetings scheduled for this year.
Thank you. Facilities, Mr. Thielman is not here, but I assume that he is involved in your meeting, Ms. Gittleson? Policy, Mr. Schlickman?
Nothing really news in, in the past six days, except that we have a typo in file BEDH-E, in that the minutes for public comment doesn't match what's in the actual policy, and so what I'd like to propose is that the next meeting, just put that in with the typo correction as a first read, without going through the committee, cause it's just a typo.
Yep.
And then, and then ask to waive the rules and, and adopt that, so I'll send you the correction for inclusion in the Novus agenda for next week, or two weeks from now.
Sounds very efficient, I approve. Perfect. Arlington High School Building Committee, Dr. Allison Ampe, any updates for us?
No, we met yesterday.
Great.
Project's still going on.
Still going on, great. Liaison reports, announcements, and future agenda items, seeing none. My understanding is that we do not need executive session, Dr. Holman, great, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much. See you on the 17th, on a Tuesday.